This conference will now be recorded.
I'm still, before we get going, I'm still baffled why during this pandemic, there's anybody making a Zoom meeting call from the office. So we disagree about that.
Okay, I'm ready.
We have a small office and we mask up anytime we're in a in a public area, but so we're all being safe unfortunately.
No, 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 I wasn't talking to you Kent, I was talking to the mayor.
I see.
Yeah, yeah.
Bob, you're muted?
I just saw Frank at the, at the fire chief voting thing, so he was, he is around. Don't know if he's coming, but I saw him from afar.
Bob, you're not. Bob, you're not transmitting. I'm gonna have to go in there. Let me mute you for a minute here. Something's going on.
Is that if someone puts pumpkins out with their leaves, do you guys take that because it's natural? Or should we tell someone who asked me the other day, they can put their old pumpkins on the curb? I know it's funny, but with the leaf, yes, you'll pick them up. Okay.
Okay, are you guys picking me up now?
Yeah.
I can hear you. Yep.
You can hear me? Okay, I'm not sure what's going on here a minute ago, but okay.
How about now? Can you hear me? Yes, okay, all right. First item is disclosure and this afternoon I had a
Do we want to call the meeting to order? Do we want to call the meeting to order?
You were muted during that.
Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to call the meeting to order. Do I have a second?
Love your second.
All in favor, Dorothea, would you call a vote please?
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passed.
Our first, first item is disclosure. And as I was, started to mention before, today I had a meeting of the executive board at the New York Conference of Mayors. And one of the points that attorney Wade Beltramo made is that because it appears we're going to be in a virtual format for some time in the future, to be mindful that if you have any communication, email, text message, or verbal conversation with somebody that's in a room with you, you need to disclose that, otherwise you're in violation of the open meetings law. So just wanted to pass that on. With that note, I'll ask, does anybody have any conflicts of interest they would like to disclose on the items of our agenda tonight?
Lampier, I do not.
I do not? Anybody else?
Stetser, I do not.
Keating, I do not. And I just, I said this before the meeting, but I'd actually like it on the record. I just want to go on the record and saying, I do, I maintain that it is not necessary for us to have members of the Board of Trustees making a call from Village Hall in a time of pandemic and serious health problems in Monroe County, when we have laptops and we have iPads and we can make it work from a remote location. So for a safety standpoint for our staff and everybody involved, I maintain that we should not be doing these calls. Nobody should be in the office except Dorothea. Thank you.
Well, I guess to respond to that, I would say that as the executive for the village, like all executives in municipal government, I'm considered an essential worker. I was in the office today since nine o'clock this morning. My presence within the building was required because Sophie Bennett was working on three separate document searches on various issues that we're dealing with in the office. Because I have an extensive knowledge of the history of the evolution of projects that's happened in the village, it was essential that I work with Sophie to sort through the documents and determine which ones were relevant to the various things that Steve Loth, Jeff Turner, and others were looking for. So my computer has been in here, in the office all day. I conducted my NYCOM executive meeting here so I could field phone calls and attend the meeting at the same time. So I don't think there's any risk. I follow the same protocol that the other employees working in the office do. Generally, I'm in the office every day of the week because there are a variety of timely issues regarding personnel, staff, policy, and other issues that require my presence within the building. With that, I would like to introduce our guest tonight. I have been in conversations with different representatives from Custom Signals. Hopefully I have the name of that company right. Yes, Custom Signals, Inc. And Kent Hayes is here tonight. I had talked previously with Carl Jones and another representative at the company. They've sent us a cost items for various speed sentry devices that Carl and I discussed in that conversation. As I summarized previously, he gave me a lot of information, but I think we're going to learn even more tonight from Kent. So with that, I'll turn over the floor and you have the floor, Kent Gardner.
Thank you and thank you for your time this evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah. You bet.
Great. I'm now sharing my screen. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. Well, first of all, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Kent Hayes. I'm the Speed Product Manager here at Custom Signals. That might, that means I am responsible for all speed enforcement products, both radar and laser products, and then also speed awareness products, which we're going to be talking about this evening. I have a brief presentation. It's about five to 10 minutes. And I would like to give you an overview of the product that is sitting behind me here. And then I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have. So this is an interactive presentation. So at any point in time, please, please stop me and ask questions. And I'll be happy to share any information I can with you. So tonight, we're going to be talking about a portable pole mount radar display. We have two models, the PMD-10 and the PMD-12. The 10, PMD-10 is for a 10 inch display. And the 12 inch display, that means the character heights of each of the speed display digits. These are lightweight and easily portable displays. They weigh about 20 pounds with the rechargeable batteries inside of them. They are versatile in configuration. We'll talk about that. It's not only a portable display, but it also has options for solar power as well as AC mains power. And they are fully functional. I'll go through a list of some of the features that are included with every one of these displays. They are very easy to program. One person can easily program these either with a Windows device, an Android device, and there's also a manual push button on the back of the device. And these include traffic data collection. So we'll talk about a SmartStat traffic data analysis tool that is included with every one of these units. And finally, these have interchangeable speed signs on the top of them. As you can see, it comes standard with a your speed sign. But we also have other signage that could be included with these for school zone, work zone, and even posted speed limits. So I'll show you a few examples of that. Again, these are lightweight and easily portable displays. They weigh about 20 pounds with the rechargeable battery. Simple one person installation. That means what it says, one person can go out and place the mount on any pole and easily hang this display. We have a secure mounting solution that can be used on a signpost. On the pictures on the left here, we have a signpost with the, the display with a couple of bolts going through it. You can see the front as well as the back of the, the mount there. And you can also mount this to a utility pole using a strap kit. So all the mounting hardware is included with this for both signposts as well as utility poles. And then once you place the display on the pole, it does have a secure lock on it so that it is vandal resistant. So once you have this up on the pole, nobody should be able to remove it from the pole except somebody who is authorized to do so. It is versatile in configuration. Again, it is portable, meaning you can move it from one location to another very easily. We have semi portable solutions as well with a solar power configuration. And then a permanent mounting solution with AC mains power wiring. Again, the same display could be utilized in any of these three configurations. It is fully functional. The following list is a set of features that is included with every one of these units. First of all, you have high and low speed blanking capabilities. That means you can program the unit with a threshold speed for either low displays or high displays. For example, if you wanted to set a minimum speed to display so that you're not reminding people, if, if, for example, you're, you have a traffic jam and people are stuffed in track, stuck in traffic, you don't want to remind them how slow they're going. Likewise, on a high speed end, you can set a high speed threshold so that it will not display somebody who might be racing by the display. There are other threshold speeds that can be programmed for different violator alerts. The most common is a flashing digit violator alert. That's giving flashing radar feedback of a driver, letting them know that they need to slow down. And likewise, once they start driving this posted speed limit, it will remain at a static display. Likewise, there are light bird, light bar violator alerts and a photo strobe alert. Now, the light bar alert has red and blue strobes that are located in the digits of the display. Those colors are interchangeable. We could have a blue, blue display, for example. Several customers on the East Coast have blue, blue light bar alerts. And then a white LED photo strobe, which is a simulated photo strobe that makes a driver think that maybe they got a speeding ticket from a photo radar solution. Now, there's not actually, there's not actually a camera in the unit, but it's a simulated photo strobe. Yes, question please?
Question. So my understanding of the red or blue light bar alert, is that flashes when a car is approaching? Or, and does it happen at the same time the strobe happens?
It could, it's, it's independent. So we either have the radar feedback, the red, blue alert, or the photo strobe. So it's, it's a selection of one of those alerts at this.
So it's one or, or the other?
That is correct.
So when I talked to Carl, he said that he felt that the strobe was the most effective because it, it created a sense of worry in the driver that they might be getting a ticket. Just I wondered what your opinion is on between the merits of, of the two systems?
It, you know, it really depends on our customer base. If you have a photo radar solution in your vicinity and your, and your region, that might be an appropriate deterrent. Now, each one of these, it is independent. You can program any one of these as your primary alert. So if you wanted the flashing digits only, you can do that. If you wanted a combination of any one of these, you can set the priority. For example, if you wanted to white photo strobe first as your, as your primary alert, you can program it that way. If you wanted the light bar alert, it's, for example, if somebody was driving 20 miles over the speed limit, that is also quite programmable. So it is, it supports any user preference that you wish.
So, so the other thing you could do is you could probably change it up, which would keep the drivers wondering if one day it was blue, the next day it was red, and the following day it was a strobe?
Absolutely. And you could literally program a schedule where it changes on a daily basis. So if you wanted it to do certain things on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, you can do that. Likewise, you can program a calendar out for up to five years. For example, if you wanted to place this in a school zone, you could program the school calendar for up to five years.
Wow, wow. That's cool.
Very good question. Thank you. So again, that's a summary of the three alerts. Again, you don't have to use any of these, but they are available and you can program those with, with different threshold speeds. Traffic statistics is included with this solution. It also has an option for stealth data collection. One of the reasons why I wanted to mention that. So if you're collecting traffic data while you're also providing speed feedback, you are influencing the data that you're collecting. You're going to be slowing people down. So the traffic data that you're collecting is, it's going to be, it's going to be skewed, if you will. So if you wish to collect true traffic statistics, you can blank the display so there's no radar feedback, but you are using the radar and the traffic computer to collect traffic statistics. So again, it could be utilized as a standalone traffic computer.
And how do you retrieve the data from the, the machine?
It's a great segue to one of my next slides.
Okay.
There is wireless capabilities. We have a Bluetooth antenna on this device. For example, I'm sitting at my, at my desk here with a laptop computer and I have a laptop with Bluetooth. I can, if I'm near the display, I can collect that traffic statistics. I can also utilize an Android device, either a phone or tablet, to collect that data as well. Any other questions?
Is, is the data part, can we actually see date, right now, our current technology only allows us to see a range of 10 miles per hour. So we don't know if someone's going 30 or 39. We don't know until they hit the next threshold. Does this parse it by individual speeds?
This is collecting every speed measure, yes. So you can look at the data and, and you can analyze it as you wish. You can export it to an Excel spreadsheet. You can ingest it into any traffic data collection tools that you may already have. We do, we do include our traffic analysis software called SmartStat, which I'll, I'll be happy to show you here in just a moment as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Great question. Okay. The last thing I wanted to mention is that this display can be programmed as a variable speed limit sign. You could literally turn the radar off and just use the display as a variable posted speed limit sign. So the signage across the top could be changed to a, to read speed limit. And for example, if you had a variable speed limits throughout the day in different parts of, of your communities, you could program it with the schedule to have different posted speed limits throughout the day or throughout the week. Okay. The system is very easy to program. We have a tool called the custom console application. Again, this device supports both Android as well as Windows. I mentioned, so I heard somebody mention iPad earlier. We don't currently support Apple or iOS devices, but that is in development. So that is a future feature that we do expect to support in, and hopefully in 2021. Unfortunately, development was a little delayed this year with COVID.
What are the devices that DPW uses right now? Are you guys using a laptop or?
I currently use a laptop, my phone, as well as an Android tablet.
Sorry, I meant, that was a question for Zach, our DPW director. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Yes, we use a laptop that has to be connected through a wire to the speed century.
Okay. Okay. The, the custom console application has a really intuitive graphical user interface. I just got a snapshot of it here where you can program some different threshold speeds. There's also a manual push button means on the back of the device so that if you didn't have electronic communications with the system or, for example, if you only supported Apple products, you could still program this device using the push button on the back of the unit. Next, I would like to share with you the SmartStat. This is our traffic data analysis software. You can compile the traffic data, collect it from the device, and ingest it into, for example, if you're, you can have all of this on one, on one solution. I have everything on my laptop computer so that I can communicate with it. Once you gather that data, you can automatically generate reports or you can manually go through and, and look at the specific information that you're looking for. Likewise, you can easily export any of the data and the charts that are included in traffic analysis. For example, if you wanted to report to this group or if you wanted to provide feedback to the community, it's very easily accessible information to share.
Can you, hi, this is Dan, trustee Keating. Can you export as a CSV? Can you get the raw data and do your own analysis on it?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay. This next slide just shows some of the interchangeable signs that you can replace. You don't have to put a, a signing on the top of it, but they are replaceable. It is, it does come included with a your speed sign. And we have optional signs for a posted speed limit. We have a safety orange work zone sign and a fluorescent yellow school zone sign. If you would like anything in addition to this, that it's all customizable, we can have any of these signs in different colors or if you wanted to customize something, that's all quite, quite feasible. So in summary, it's a portable display. It's easy to move from one location to another. We do have options for permanent and semi-permanent installation with both solar as well as AC mains power. It's easy for one person to install and manage this solution. And again, it is very easy to program and to deploy. And in closing, I wanted to share this one statistic here. For more than two decades, for more than 20 years, speeding has been a factor in more than 30% of all motor vehicle fatalities. And that is a statistic from NHTSA. So now you have a better tool to help you save lives. So with that, that is what I have prepared for this evening. I'd like to open the floor for any questions that you may have.
Did I hear you write, this is trustee Keating again? Did I hear you write that you said solar is an option? Or is that, okay. So then if you don't have solar, how do you recharge?
Okay, and it comes standard with a battery charger. There is a port on the back of the unit that you just plug this in and plug it into an AC power supply and that will recharge the internal battery.
And if you, do you have an image of what the solar panel would look like? And how remote can that be from, from the unit itself?
I don't have a photo of the solar power installation, unfortunately. It does have a tether on it. Typically, we would pull, we would mount the solar panel on the same pole so that it would be in close proximity. I forget the length.
How roughly, how big is the solar panel?
I believe it's a 50 watt panel. So with the solar panel and depending on your, in your community, light provided throughout the year should be more than enough to keep it running 24 hours. I'm sorry, if there was a question, I did not hear it.
You, you broke up, Lilly. Lilly, we can't hear you.
Kent, while we're waiting, I'm not sure, just wanted to thank you for being here and presenting this. It's really terrific work and we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for having me. And it's, it's been my pleasure to spend part of your evening with you.
I have a few more questions.
I have a question, trustee Lampier.
Go ahead. Lilly, you have the floor. You, we, we lost you again.
Lilly, do you want to type, type it into the chat? And then Dorothea can read it, read it off? I don't know if it's a long, involved question, but.
Can you hear us, Lilly?
He's frozen again, or turn off your camera. Yeah, turn off your camera, Mo.
Yeah, Lilly, you might want to turn off your camera.
There we go. It's in the chat.
There we go, okay.
Trustee Lampier.
Is there a trial program is the question?
Try it before you buy it.
He landed. Did I say it? I do. Okay, how? About, no? How about now?
Lilly, we hear you, but you're breaking up now.
About now?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh boy, still having trouble, Lilly.
Last time it worked well, Lilly, when you called in on the phone. That, that seemed, when we had this.
We could, I'm working on my, yeah, I, because my computer stopped working. Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, we can, we can hear you now.
My computer stopped working.
I see somebody's typed a question.
Well, my computer had stopped working, so I switched to my phone.
Okay, you're loud and clear now.
Is there a trial program that we could?
Absolutely.
Is there a trial program that we might take advantage of to see?
Yes, ma'am. We do offer 30, 60, and even 90 trial programs. So that is definitely an option if you'd like to consider.
We definitely would.
Okay, thank you.
And is there a minimum for the trial program? Do we need to get four of these things deployed? What do you usually recommend?
We do typically ask for a minimum purchase in a, in a trial program like that. But that also could be waived and, and in certain circumstances. But we'd, we'd be more than, we'd be more than happy to off your trial program. So I will commit to us for, for doing that for you.
And are these delivered to us? And then our DPW team would put these out? Or do you also install them?
We would plan on delivering these to you. And we do have training videos available that would help guide you through the, the setup and installation process. I could, I could also train somebody in this scenario remotely in, in just a few minutes on, on how to program one of these units. For example, right now, I'm sharing an application that is utilized to program this unit. I don't know, can you see my screen or can you see my application?
Yes.
Yes.
This is a means to set this first window as the, the blanking so that I'm starting to display speeds at 20 miles per hour. This next window is a flashing digit alert. I've got it set to program at 37 or 36 miles per hour. So that's typically, say, a 35 mile per hour speed zone. And then this next one is the violator alerts, the red, blue alerts. I wanted to change that to the photo strobe. I could click on the scenario, select the white photo strobe, and now I've programmed that. And then I can have up to five different threshold speeds if I wish. And then if I wanted to, I could go into a calendar mode and I could program different days of the week, months of the year. I could have up to five different programs throughout the calendar year. One of the ones I often use for school zone is a, a, a school day and then a weekend program. So that could just be radar feedback whenever school is not in session.
Terrific, and thank you for sending over the price list as well. We appreciate that.
You're, you're most welcome. I know this is on contract in the state of New York. But if there's any additional, for example, one of the questions was, you know, is there a minimum purchase for that, that trial program? We do have leniency with the, with this contract that we could give you volume discounts. For example, if you were considering multiple units. That is also built into that contract.
Kent, how long do the batteries, how, how long does the charge last on the batteries? Ken, how long do the batteries, how long does the charge last on the batteries?
Great question. It really depends on how heavy the traffic is. On typical traffic, say in a 35 mile per hour zone, it will last a good seven to eight days. There are things that you can do to extend that runtime. For example, in front of the building here, I will turn the radar off at nighttime. So from, say, 10:00 PM until 5:00 AM, the radar will be off, and that will help conserve the battery. So I can get, you know, eight to 10 days of runtime typically in front of our building in that scenario.
Our busiest section of road has about 20,000 cars a day. What would that look like for battery life?
20,000 a day would probably get you a good six to seven days of operation.
Okay.
Okay, that's pretty good. Because the other thing, if we could get a photograph of the solar panel, obviously, at some of our, all of our gateways, aesthetics is a concern. So we would be concerned the way, where we could put those panels that it wouldn't create an eyesore when you enter into the village.
Certainly. Well, I've got a, I've got a solar system at the factory. I'd be more than happy to have somebody take a photo of that and send it over to you, so.
Great.
That'd be great.
To the people on the phone who haven't seen the meeting packet, just to see you guys have a ballpark. The pricing was, I think it was around 2,700 for the unit, and then there were some add-ons. One of them was the solar panel is about 640, and then additional batteries, 350, and that kind of thing. So, I don't know, we're looking at mid 3,000 per, per unit probably when we configure it. So just so you have a ballpark on what these things cost.
Thanks, Dan.
No, I think if you include, I think if you include all of the options, it comes to 4,200. Trustee Galusha.
That's, that's right, Frank. That is correct. Ken, I had another question. In my prior discussion with Carl Jones, we talked a little bit about the issues surrounding speed enforcement cameras. And what he told me is that in cities like Washington DC that use them, the courts will not accept data for the, to issue a ticket for the driver. But they get around that by treating it as a moving violation and ticketing the owner of the car, whoever that might be. Could you discuss a little bit about how your speed cameras work? And the pros and cons of their usage, and if you know anything about where they have been employed successfully, and perhaps some of the pitfalls and liabilities that have also happened in some of the places where they have been used?
Well, thank you for that question. We do have a speed camera solution that's always a portable unit. I'm showing you a laser solution that we manufacture here at Custom Signals. It's called the ProLaser 4. This has an option to have a camera integrated with this unit. And it is always operated by a police officer. So it's always a manned enforcement situation. So we do not currently offer any automated enforcement solutions. So that does help with the, the different regulatory requirements or, or laws in the, in the different communities that we serve.
So that, those would need to be deployed by deputies in the Monroe County Sheriff's Department? And so do we, like, do we have to have it, Mayor Corby, maybe you know, do we? What would we have to do to allow them to be able to use these things?
That, that I don't know. I think we would have to research that because honestly, I don't have the answer for that.
Well, I was just thinking it would be good for them to have them right now. Because they're, you know, they're having some difficulties during COVID with pulling people over. And so they're not able to issue tickets like, like normal. And we do have some tricky spots where the officers can't both monitor and get out of the spot fast enough to catch some of the drivers.
So officer, officer safety is always a paramount concern.
Yeah, yeah.
Any enforcement equipment, so.
Okay, well, I will ask Captain Delizer the next time I speak with them, if they would.
Yeah, I am not familiar with, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'll let you finish, and then I've got another question. Go ahead.
Certainly. I'm not familiar with, you know, the city ordinances that you referenced. I know that there are laws in different states and even different metro areas. For example, the state of Texas will not allow us to utilize photo enforcement even on a portable device like this. Because it's, it's been legislated that way. Unfortunately, that limits us to even using in-car video that's interfaced with a radar solution, which we've been doing for 30 plus years, so. And likewise, in the Beltway and the DC area. I, I am familiar with several of the automated enforcement solutions that are deployed there. We've, we've gone to court and we've had judicial notice on our devices in, in DC. So we, we are familiar with some of the, some of the requirements there, so. But if there's any research that we can, that we can assist you with, we'd be happy to do so. But also asking your local law enforcement would probably be the best, the best approach there as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
What's, if, if we do order a device, what's the lead time in getting one?
We typically will quote 30 days, but we will often beat that. We do, we do have several of these in stock at our factory in Sheneut, Kansas. So we should be able to deploy something much quicker than 30 days.
And since you're another person, in your opinion of the options, which are the ones that you would recommend?
It sounds like you've already decided that the solar solution is going to be something that you would like. Another one of the options, we do offer an 8-inch Samsung tablet with the application preloaded on it, and it would be paired with any displays that we send out to you. That does make it really seamless as far as setting up and programming the solution. But if you're already utilizing laptops with your current solution, really, there's no reason to, you know, unless there's a problem with that particular laptop, there's no reason to spend the extra money to do that, in my opinion.
Ken, another, another question for you. You know, you, you mentioned at the beginning of your presentation that it's pretty easy to take these down and remount them in a different location, which obviously is an advantage for us. Because we've got seven gateways that we're concerned about. If, if you go with the solar option, how much difference is there in the work that's required to move the device around?
It is more work. The solar solution has a battery box. So it's a secure enclosure for an external battery. And then you're also going to have the solar panel with its mount to consider. So I would describe that more as a semi-permanent solution when you, when you're talking about the solar power. I would not be the one, I would not want to be the one that has to move that from location to location.
Okay, so, so that really the battery operated one is more transient, that's, that's more portable than the solar one?
Yes, sir. So the.
Good to know.
Hardware. This mounting bracket is, it's versatile. It can be mounted on a signpost as well as any utility pole. And again, all the mounting hardware is on the inside of it so that when the display is mounted, it's not accessible to any vandals.
And, and in terms of the lifespan, what, what's the lifespan of a battery and when they need to be replaced? How much do they cost?
I believe we've got a quote to you for additional batteries, so that would be the replacement cost of the, of the internal rechargeable battery. I'll, I'll be honest with you, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know the, the number of cycles that you can charge these batteries. It's a lithium ion battery, so those would be typically up to 1,000 charges, but that's something that I can definitely, I can research the specifications and report that back to you.
The, 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 I think the quote for the batteries is $350 for a battery. Let me ask a question, trustee Galusha. Do these, do these devices come in some kind of a trailer? So you just haul them from, from one location to another? Or do you have to pick the unit up and load it on a truck?
This particular unit is just the radar display that you see here. We do have other products, radar speed feedback trailers that are available in different configurations. In fact, we have an entire line of speed awareness products with 18-inch characters on the, to very large variable message signs with radar feedback. So this is just our entry level product as far as radar feedback is, is concerned.
So it would take so it would take one, possibly two people to move a device from one location to another?
Yes, sir. So with, with the rechargeable, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And to charge the battery, do you have to bring the unit into a facility? The whole unit?
So yes, you would need to bring the unit into a location where you could plug in the battery to recharge it.
So you're going to move the whole unit into a garage and charge it? How long is the charge? I mean, how does it take, how long does it take to charge up a battery?
A fully depleted battery on the portable unit will take about six to eight hours.
Okay.
Now, if you're considering the solar configuration, which I believe, it sounds like you may be interested in, you would not have to bring that unit back in for recharge. With the solar panel configuration, that should be able to be deployed full-time.
Even in our cloudy climate?
Even in your cloudy climate.
Okay.
I, I think one of the things that we should consider though, and, and again, in my previous discussions with Carl, and there was another lady I also spoke to at the company. The, these devices tend to be most effective when they're moved around. And I think unless we buy seven of them, which probably isn't financially possible in one year to purchase seven of them, we're going to need to move them around. The other thing, you know, in looking, if you actually look at the different locations at the gateways that we have to locate these devices, in several of the areas, we have grading issues, or we have a grass strip that, that isn't really wide enough to safely accommodate the trailer. So we kind of ruled out that option. I think the, it's, it's much easier to move these smaller devices around, put them higher. I think they're equally visible, as I've seen them in other communities, and they always do get your attention, especially when they flash. So I, I'm recommending that we dispense with the idea of the trailer. That works well in somewhere like the town of Pittsburgh where they have real, more real estate to cite it. We have, because we're a village, we have pretty tight areas that we really need to locate these devices.
And I think, I mean, we have some options for trailers with the sheriff's department and, and I don't know the town.
Good point, good point, yep.
Or not, Zach, or do we borrow?
May I add that you also have renting options? I'm sure there's companies in your region that would service and protect, potentially rent you a unit if you had a, a need for a short period of time.
Right, that is, that is true, that is true. Okay, any other questions for Ken? Okay, Ken, thank you very much for coming in tonight. This has been very informative and very helpful.
Thank you for your time. It's been my pleasure.
Thanks, Ken.
All right. Have a good evening.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
Okay, it is 7:15. And our first public hearing of the night is to consider an application of Aladdin's Restaurant to open a commissary across the street. Is someone here representing Aladdin's? Hey, are we expecting someone, Dorothea from Aladdin's, to represent Aladdin's?
I'm unaware. I, I was not in conversation with them. I know, Steve, did you speak to them? Steve, you're muted.
Yeah, I, I spoke to him today, but I didn't mention or I didn't talk about the meeting because I assumed that they'd been reached out to in regard to the meeting.
He was aware of the posting. Um, if you give me a minute, I'll go off camera and give him a call and see what's the holdup.
All right, why don't, why don't we take a recess for a minute to allow Dorothea to do that? I'll make a motion to recess for five minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Well, hopefully this is a unanimous vote because we don't have Dorothea to record it, so. I'll call for a vote. I.
I, Keating, I.
Thank you. Hey, Steve?
Hey, Bob, Red, I just joined the meeting. Perhaps you want to explain what we're doing here?
We're, we're about to start the public hearing for Aladdin's. Dorothea is calling to see if someone from Aladdin's wants to attend. And do you know what section the special permits are in the code, the new code, so I can refer to those criteria?
Sorry, 34, 35, or 36, but I'm looking right now.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Jeff, you.
It's either 34, 35, or 36, but I'm looking right now.
What article? Oh, 34, okay, I see.
35. It's section 35.
Okay, I did reach someone who is going to get in touch with Mr. Crawford and tell him he needs to be into the meeting. I don't know if we wanted to move on to our other public hearing in between.
Can we go to the next public hearing, Jeff, and, and come back to this?
Certainly, they're both published for 7:15.
All right, so let's move on. Okay, so, um, we will consider the public hearing for a proposal by the Habad Lubavitch to operate a daycare facility for members of the Habad is, is. Is, is Rabbi Hein or someone here from, I see Rabbi Hein. Rabbi, would you like to talk about what you're proposing at the Habad? And welcome. You're muted.
Hi, I'm, I'm actually Rishi, I'm Rabbi's wife. And I'm the one who's, hi, nice to meet you all. Thank you all for being here. I'm the one who's starting up a very small preschool. And we have a beautiful little space that can accommodate 10 to 12 children. And we feel the community really could use a, a progressive, high-quality early childhood program. And, you know, the idea is that it's, you know, a small group. The village presents a beautiful opportunity for children to explore and to learn from just the surroundings, then the neighborhood feel, the people in the neighborhood, the nature around, and, and as far as, you know, the dead end street that we're on, talking to a lot of the neighbors, we feel that, you know, dropping off children, picking up should not be an issue because it'll be distributed throughout the day, meaning kids will be picked up at different times. We have the use of our parking lot and the pastor over at the church also was really, really kind to allow us to use some local parking there in case it was needed. So that's it in short, just looking to run a small preschool for some of the families that we. And the village couldn't be a better place for that.
And, and what would the schedule be and what would the hours of operation?
So actually, what I would really like is, you know, full hours, meaning, you know, drop off starting at around 8:00 or 8:30 in the morning, with options for families to send their children for like half the day, so let's say 1 o'clock. And then an option for our working families who need more coverage for their children, more childcare to be able to give their children some.
Okay, before we open the public hearing, are there any other questions from members of the board? No. Okay, I'll make a.
Bob, I have a clarification question. I'm looking at the application. It says it's going to be limited to members of the congregation. I'm not sure if she dropped out when she said that, but is that the case?
Limited to members of the congregation. Um, that is a good question. I don't know, I don't know how technically that could work because we don't really have membership. But I would say, um, I guess my target audience are people that we serve in our congregation, but it's not actual membership, so.
Okay, and, and is it going to have, going to have some kind of religious component to this daycare?
Yes, this is going to be a Jewish preschool, geared to Jewish families who would like a Jewish education for their children.
Jeff, Jeff, question for you. Why does that matter?
Because if it was not part of their religious outreach, it wouldn't be a permitted use.
Okay. I don't remember the zoning in that area. I know that building is a different color on the map. I just don't remember exactly what it was zoned for and what it wasn't.
It, it's the same zoning district, but religious uses are permitted. And this, this would qualify as an accessory use for the religious use which has been permitted there. It's also a protected use because it is part of the religious mission of the Habad.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Renee?
Stetzer's second. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Renee. Uh, Dorothea, could we call for a vote, please?
Okay, trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Lanfear's second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Can you hear?
We hear you, trustee Lanfear. Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustees Lanfear again? Lilly, are you hearing?
Lanfear, aye.
Got him. Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Would, would someone like to speak on this application? And if you do, we need your name and your address.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Okay, the public hearing is open. Does anyone wish to speak on this application? I.
Yes, this is Matthew Lenars at 27 Lincoln Avenue. We're across the street from the Habad. And I spoke with Rishi the other day. Thank you for coming by. And we support, my wife and I, Kristen, support the, this application. The only concern we'd have or, or request and, and that we spoke with Rishi about is, is making sure that the, that the customers, I guess, have come, are aware of the parking limitations and make sure that the, you know, they're, they're legally parked either in their lot on the street or across at St. Paul's.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If there is not, I would make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Frank seconded. Dorothea, would you call a roll call vote, please?
Okay, trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, aye. Are we sure, wait, are we sure everyone, I mean, there are a lot of people on the call. I just wanted to make sure we got everyone. Wave your hand or something. It seems like, okay. Just one comment.
Yeah, we don't want to cut anybody off. That's correct.
Okay, trustee Keating?
Well, ho- hold on, there's something from the Yara family saying they were trying and they're neighbors of there. Yes, now we can.
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I did try to say something. I'm also a neighbor, Stacy Filbrick Yada at 31 Washington Ave, just down the street. And I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm strongly in support of this. The Hines have been wonderful neighbors and their programming is an asset to our little neighborhood. And especially, I was impressed this high holiday season that they managed the flow of people coming for high holiday services safely and efficiently and without any disruption to the neighborhood. So I'm confident that this will be fine for us.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Dorothea, would you continue with the roll call vote?
Okay, we'll start over. Um, trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear? Trustee Lanfear?
Lilly, we can't hear you. You're frozen.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes. I can't determine what trustee Lanfear was saying.
Um.
Lanfear, aye. There it is.
This is, besides this, is there anything we can do to support the Habad?
Yes.
Is there anything else you need besides this?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Is my mic still on? Let me just make sure that you can still hear me.
Now we can hear you.
Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, now, I, I appreciate, you know, everything that the village and all the neighbors have done to support us and welcome us. And it's just been nothing but a pleasure. Just to follow up on what Matt Lenars had mentioned before about the parking is that I really would, you know, if the process for getting our daycare license, you know, continues on successfully, I would love to work with the village. Can you still hear me?
We can.
We can.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I can work with the officials in the village and, you know, create a plan for parking flow and things like that if, if, if the need arises. So that we can keep everything smooth and organized for our living in the village.
Very good.
To, to, to understand, in, in approving a permit like this, there are several criteria that we have to go through in the code that assess the impact of it. For the purposes of the permit that we're going to approve tonight, could you give us a number of the maximum number of participants that you anticipate of serving in the, in the service that you're going to provide?
So the space that we currently run, you know, and according to, to New York State Code, you know, each child in a program is only, is allowed a lot at a certain amount of square feet. So the space that we have, I don't, I don't anticipate that we would have room for more than a dozen children. So we're talking about a pretty small group.
The, the permit that we'll, we'll consider tonight will be for a maximum of 12 children. And then in the future, if it grew beyond that, you could always come back in and modify the permit.
Bob, the application, the application says five to 14, so that's what we've. Very clear in the application.
Would it be 14 or would it be 12?
Well, in, in the application, which is what we just voted on, it was, it was.
We, we just heard from the applicant that it was perhaps 12, so I just want to make sure we have the correct number.
Okay, it's, it's in the application and we've already voted, so we can just move on. Thank you, Mrs. Hein, appreciate it.
We, we haven't, we haven't voted on it, Dan. I think we're trying to clarify it, so. So may, may I ask again, do you think that the maximum number would be 12 or 14 children?
I wouldn't, I would need to verify that with the fire chief probably. Once we have like a, a map of the, of the space, then we have the exact square footage, we'd be able to determine the exact number. So this is just my guess.
Okay. To do this properly, we should have, you know, we have to have a clear understanding of what you're proposing. Would you like us to table this so we, you can clarify that, so we can consider that? Because we have to go, in, in terms of our, our legal review, we have to go through criteria A through F in the code. And so it, it doesn't, I don't have a preference one way or the other. We could go with a larger number and then you, if, if you couldn't do that number, you could always go with 12. So why don't we say 14 for tonight? That way we can move forward.
Okay.
Does that make sense, everybody?
So we're following the way it's written in the application.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay, would, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application as submitted from Habad.
Okay.
Stetzer's second.
Um, I, I would like to amend the motion to include some findings. Number one, the use is permitted because it's an accessory to the religious mission of the Habad, because it provides a service for, for a Jewish daycare service for members of the Habad and possibly others. Uh, number two, and the application is in, conforms with all applicable regulations for certain uses as provided by Article 24 of the Chap- Chapter 35 of the Village Code. Number three, the Habad provides adequate off-street parking to provide for the use. Number four, the parking lot is, is, is screened by landscaping and it has been previously approved. And, and number four, the proposed use is compatible with the neighborhood because it does not require any physical exterior changes to the outside of the facility. And it's a small-scale use, providing a service for no more, a maximum of 14 children. Would you accept my conditions, Dan? Because it's your motion.
No, not okay.
Yes, I mean, I mean, some of it's redundant already in the application, but yeah.
Okay. Yes, Steve?
I have a question real quick. Um, Yeti, can you hear me?
It's Rishi. Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, now you're the, you're the hedgerow that runs along between you and your neighbor. Um, is it, does the hedgerow return to the house? Or is there a fence that returns from the hedgerow to the house?
Do you, do you mean behind the parking lot?
No, the one right in your side yard, right between the barn and your house. There's a hedgerow that runs between your yard and your neighbor's yard.
Yes, that's right. So what was your question?
Is it, does it return to the house? Is there a fence or something so that the children would be kept in the backyard there and can't go to the front yard beyond that?
I hear what you're saying. There is no gate to enclose, although that's probably one of the things we're going to have to do to enclose the space fully, to make it safe for children.
Right, that is, that is one of the requirements in the code is a screening in an enclosed area. So that's, that's why I want to make your, or I didn't know, Bob, that that would be maybe part of the motion too, to make sure that the screening is completed for the daycare area.
So there's, I would amend the motion, amend my additions to Dan's motion to include that screening and enclosure of the exterior daycare area is included in the proposal to the satisfaction of the building inspector.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Dorothea, could we ask for a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Yay. Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I believe we still don't have anybody from Aladdin's, so I would move the. Oh, oh, yes. Hi, Don.
Thank you, Mrs. Hein. Thank you, Mrs. Hein. Say, give our best to the rabbi and let us know how we can help.
And, and good luck with your service. Have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you. You can't see, but just talk, they can hear you.
Just make one quick comment. If you are not speaking, if I can request that people mute themselves, we're getting terrible feedback.
But everybody who's not speaking, mute themselves. Hi, Rabbi Hein.
The rabbi's here. Just wanted to remind. So just, so just so you know, you're welcome to join us, 7:00, 7:30 Saturday night.
Thank you. We'll be there.
Fantastic. Have a wonderful day, a wonderful night.
You too. Thank you, Rabbi. Okay. Uh, we have John Crawford who's here representing Aladdin's. John, would you like to tell us about the commissary?
Yes, I'm looking to build a little kitchen across the street at where the most clay location was located. It'd be a small little operation. In the summertime, I'd be using the, using the kitchen from basically 7:00 in the morning to about 11:30, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And then on, in the wintertime when it's slower, I'd be using it basically Mondays and Fridays, same hours for the most part. I employ about four people in the summertime and, and three people in the wintertime.
Okay, any questions from the board?
This is trustee Lanfear. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Yes, thank you. John, will there be any exterior changes to the building in order to accommodate the commissary?
No, not at all.
Okay, so you have the one little window that. Okay. So you have the one little window that faces the alley. Is that correct?
Uh, faces the alley. You mean in the back or on the side?
And the Shane's.
Shane Place side, John.
Yes, it was.
Right, the Shane Place side. Okay. So you would not be blocking that window is my question. May I assume that we, we will be able to see in there?
Yes.
That would be a plus, I think.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, John.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead, Frank. Go ahead.
Um, nine Shane Place is actually listed as the coal tower. Is that where you're going to do this?
No, it's the old mostly clay. Uh, I, I'm going, and, and going off of nine is, is what I, what the bill address is for, um, for margin and what my lease through the counts is, is. Uh, so it, maybe it is the wrong address.
Yeah, that, that's what I think because when I went through and I checked it, I thought nine is the coal tower. And I don't think that's, that's actually factual. So the application needs to be corrected.
Should be seven.
Number seven?
Number seven. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Okay. Any other comments? If not, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Lancelier, second. Lancelier, second.
Dorothea, would you call a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lancelier.
Lancelier, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Does anyone wish to speak on this application? Going once, going twice. Since there are no requests to speak, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second, trustee Galusha.
Lancelier, second.
Dorothea, would you call a vote and whoever that is mute yourself, please?
That's John. John, if you could mute yourself, please. Thank you.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lancelier.
Trustee Lancelier.
Trustee Lancelier. I think we. Lily, do we have you? Got her. Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Did you hear me?
Yep.
Trustee Lancelier, aye.
We can hear you now. Any, any, any comments or questions about the commissary proposal for seven Shane Place?
It's, I'm glitching something terrible.
Yes, you are.
Okay. All right. Since there are no questions or comments, I will propose a motion to approve the commissary application for seven Shane Place. This is an existing commercial space. The number of employees is approximately the same as the previous use for the space. Uh, there is no apparent environmental effects from previous discussions. I understand that trash will be handled in the same arrangement that handles trash from Aladdin. So there's no additional dumpster or screening requirements. And the application appears to conform to the requirements A through F of Section 210 dash thirty-five point four of the Village Code. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion. Trustee Galusha.
Lancelier, second. Yay. Thanks, Frank.
And any discussion? Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lancelier.
Lancelier, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, now let's go back to the beginning of our agenda and, uh, hear from the building inspector.
Hey, um, John, John, uh, before we move on, um, just wanted to know if there's anything else we can do to support your business besides this?
Yeah, just keep coming visiting when you can. I appreciate, uh, all your help.
Will do, John. Good luck with the commissary.
John, John.
Yes.
Yeah, um, whoever you're going to have do the work. I need insurance information then before I can process a permit for that.
Will do. Forget it tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, John.
Okay. Good night, guys.
Good night, John. Thanks for coming. Okay. Steve, you have the floor.
Everybody should have got my report. I didn't know if there's any questions or comments or constructive criticism.
I do not.
Other than that, it's just pretty much, usually I patrol the village. I caught somebody else doing the roof again. Um, another roof and, uh, making them get a permit. Um, and, and I try to, I try to make a trip around the village every day just to keep an eye on things the best I can.
Can you go, your report was very helpful. Thank you, Steve. Can you go a little deeper into the, um, the failure of final inspection on the copper leaf down at Northfield Common? And are those, are they, are they cooperative on solving the issues? Are they major issues? What are the kinds of things that were causing problems there? And is there a path to mitigating them?
Um, I actually completed the final. I went back today and re-inspected and did a file. They were missing some proximity sensors for, uh, commercial bathroom use. They didn't have CO smokes in the place. They did not have fire extinguishers in the storeroom and in the main area. Those, all those issues have been taken care of. And as I said, I re-inspected today and I'm going to issue a C of O for the building tomorrow. And they expect to have a, a soft opening, uh, sometime later this month.
I'm going to get hammered.
Yeah, the place looks really nice. They, they went through, yeah, they went through a, a, a pretty hard time fighting when the floor, the, the one contractor messed the floor up. And that was a big holdup for them because they literally had to take, remove a, a whole much bunch of the floor and redo it. And it, it really caused a, uh, a back. And of course COVID and, and everything with contractors caused them a, a lot of delay too. So, um, their Brian is very grateful to be able to get to the point now where they're going to be able to start brewing. So should be interesting.
It's been a long road, so it'll be great to see them open.
At two years, actually, from the original decision, it's been two years.
Steve, they're not going to brew. They're going to assemble farm products, if you recall.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Steve?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Um, Zach, would you like to, uh, report on the DPW?
Uh, hello? I was actually able to get you guys my report on time this time. So, uh, you guys have any questions or concern? I don't know if you had a chance to read it.
Really great job on the brush, uh, really great job on the brush this fall, Zach.
Yeah, it worked out well for us. I wish it was like this every year.
Yeah, you didn't get a big snow to mess it all up while it was still out there. So, yeah. How's the team?
Every year.
Yeah. How's the team holding up after that? I know.
Trustee Lancelier, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is, can you hear me? This is trustee Lancelier. Can you hear me?
Lily, we can hear you.
Can you hear?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much. I feel like such an idiot because I'm speaking, speaking and no one can hear me. I just wanted to say, uh, for the, for the record, I had already, uh, sent the crew a thank you, but I, I wanted to say for the record, I'm really so, um, happy and grateful for the wonderful day job, job they did on decorating the village. Uh, it was really, um, stinky weather when they had to, when they were putting up the, the wreaths, et cetera. And, and they did a great job and I really appreciate them. Thank you.
Glad you're happy with them, Lily, and thank you for the gift. Um, it was, we weren't expecting to win that day and, uh, you know, we got through it though. Everything worked out pretty well.
I would just mention that, um, Zach and I met down at the DPW property to take a look at the uh, north side of the, the siphon. Uh, this would be the westernmost siphon for the village. Uh, there currently is a problem to access that. Zach is, uh, putting together a plan, uh, which will be included in the projected sewer budget for next year to improve access. So we can actually get the flush truck up to the siphon and service it more readily than we can at the current time. This will require putting down, uh, so, some grading a small area, putting down some gravel and clearing out some of the dead wood and brush that surrounds the siphon. Anything else you'd like to add, Zach?
Uh, no, that's the gist of that. Um, there is one thing that I did want to bring up. Um, at the end of my report, the DOT, uh, Route 3196 project, um, the DOT did, uh, give us a draft design for the bump outs that are going to be, uh, put in front of, uh, Pontelo. And, uh, there were some conflicts with some of the drainage that were, uh, going to be adjusted on that road. The, it looks like the, uh, the southern bump out is going to be shifted west. So one of the parking stalls looks like it's going to go away in front of ESL. Um, and so a new catch basin is going to have to be put in there along with a new, uh, drainage pipe crossing over the other side of the road, uh, where it's going to meet up with another, uh, new catch basin. Um, we have sanitary sewers on both sides of the road there, and both of these catch basins are going to be in close proximity to uh, the, the sanitary sewer. So Scott Harder and I were kind of putting our heads together with coming up with different ideas to, to get around this. Just because anything being dug up that close to the sanitary sewer poses a problem with a hundred-year-old sewer system, um, being clean, everything. If it's, if it cracks, then it's going to open up a world of problems. So, uh, him and I are currently going through, um, back and forth with the DOT, trying to sort this out. One issue, yes.
Quick question. Um, originally when, because I think DOT used the pedestrian safety, um, improvement plan designs for this. And I remember the first iteration of them, there was an issue with where the, um, where the bump outs were going to be. When we did the walkthrough, the engineers determined that there would be too much, um, I guess, moving of the utility, which is exactly what you're talking about. So I, maybe Bob can, um.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, can we meet out on site? Because I've got to see this, compare this drawing with what's actually out there and maybe we can come up with a better solution.
Yeah, because I thought they shifted it based on the, the need, the, the cost of redoing all of these utility things. And so I thought, I thought we, the design was moved and improved based on our, uh, on-street walkthrough.
With all the utilities in that area, it's so congested that it's really difficult to get away from being on top of the utilities being on top of one another.
Okay.
Um, but a couple of the ideas was to, instead of having a, uh, typical framing grate for, uh, the drainage inlet was to bury them underneath a curb. Um, you don't really see it too often anymore, but it would shift it away from, uh, the sanitary sewer, um, enough to give it a little bit of clearance. Um, the other idea that they had too was on the north side of the road, um, they currently have the bump out ending at the driveway between Pontelo's and Canadago National Bank on the Pontelo side. The other idea is to extend it so it goes to the west side of the driveway. So it would actually end up out in front of Canadago National Bank. Um, but it would eliminate one of the parking spots over there. Um, I see a positive and a, a negative to that. One, the positive. I'm sorry?
No, I was just going to say, I think we need to meet out on site and, and take a look at it together on, on site. Let's do that in the next, over the next couple of days. Because I might want to come up with a better solution.
Zach, I'm interested to hear you finish your thought there. Um, you said you see a number of pros and cons. I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
Uh, well, the one, uh, being on the north side of the road is extending the bump out to the west side of the driveway would, I, I think would help with pedestrian safety with cars pulling out of that driveway. Um, and allowing them access to the road and having a better, a clearer shot of the oncoming traffic that they're going to be turning into. Um, but again, you're also eliminating a parking spot, which I know that parking.
We really don't want to do. Correct.
Right. Um, as for the other side of the road on the south side, on the west end of the proposed bump out, um, I don't know what they're going to be doing with the parking on that side of the road, but it looks like they're at least eliminating one, if not one and a half parking spots in front of ESL. Um, so I guess that's another question. I don't know if you guys would have a, a, a clear detail um, on the western end of that section of State Street, but, um.
I, I think, I think that's a concern actually, Zach, because in the earlier designs, we knew we were going to lose one space on the uh, north side of the street, but not necessarily on the south side also. And that right now, you know, I mean, I think street, on-street parking for a variety of reasons. It's a traffic calming device. It's also in a premium location there to have as much as possible. So I, I really do want to walk it with you with these, with this, with this drawing and also the earlier schematic drawing. So we can compare the two of them to the actual conditions.
And are, are they still covering the, even though they've run into a couple of, um, things that might make the project more expensive? Are they still covering the cost of all of this? Or will we incur some costs depending on where they decide to put the bump out?
They haven't.
As far as I know, it's, it's all DOT money that's going to be paying for this.
Okay.
And then I, obviously anything extra that we would probably, you know, try to include would be, uh, a cost added from the village.
Correct, correct. Okay. All right. Anything else on that? Okay, let's move on.
I, I have something else for Zach. Zach, you said at the end of page one of your report, you said UFPO stakeouts? And I just don't know what that is. Can you help me know what that is?
Uh, sure. Utility stakeouts per, uh, dig request. So if a contract call, a contractor calls in, um, uh, calls eight-one-one and they are proposing a, a, a dig, then um, we have to go in and mark out utilities per that request. So I get probably five to 10 of them, um, a month or so. And that's just going through and, and locating our, uh, storm and sanitary sewers and marking them out with either flags or pink.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jeff Turner, do you have anything to report?
Nothing, nothing major. It's just the day-to-day stuff that we, you know, we do when Steve calls, you called, trustees called, we, we worked on it. We got the ATP done. That was, we were working pretty heavy on that. So that's over with. So that's good. No, nothing major to report.
Okay. Um, Dorothea, would you like to give the treasurer's report, please?
Um, Mary is here. She would like to go ahead and give the treasurer's part. I will turn the floor over to her happily.
Okay, I'm, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Seems to be the question of the night. I have vouchers for approval to the, uh, total of one seventeen, five forty-four ninety-one. Of them. Two ninety-seven for the wreaths for the adjusted cost of seventeen fifty.
Yeah, really.
It was, that was good. HS funding, HSA funding and employer reimbursements included in here. Jeff, not Jeff. Edwards Tree Service for removal of some trees and, uh, wreaths, uh, for the bridge. Let me see what else. Scott Harder for the village growth project is in here. It's three ten.
Mason.
I have, go ahead.
Mason trenching.
Yes, Mason trenching. For the eighty-five hundred for Monroe Avenue. Um, Regional International for truck two repairs. That is say Villager also for the catch basin repair on Locust for eleven thousand. for 11,000, our annual uh, insurance. And let's see what else is in here. Um, and the sewer fund vouchers, 315 for uh, Joe Johnson for flush truck repairs for 12,000. And uh, for our bond agent, um, the capital improvements fund for 370. Any questions?
I have a question on the funding of the HSA amounts. Those are different per, okay, it's, it, that's a personal choice, right? I, I was just trying to figure out why they were different for different employees.
They're, they're different depending on if it's a single plan, family plan. That's the criteria.
Okay, thanks.
I reviewed, reviewed the vouchers. I would just uh, make a comment that Craig Prince did a phenomenal amount of work for only $8,500, and that we got a great deal of value on that project. Go ahead, Mary.
I'm uh, is that, are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'd need an approval to pay the bills.
Would someone like to make a motion? I'll make a motion. Do I have a second? Would someone like to make a second? Thank you. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Yes, trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lampier. Trustee Lampier.
He's not visible right now, so we're going to move along. Uh, motion carries. Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next section, attorney bills that I have pending. I have one minor adjustment in here, and that is for the Zoglin Group for invoice 679 for 4669. Um, we do have that changed to 2,169 for a courtesy discount, uh, thanks to conversations between Mindy Zoglin and uh, Mayor Corby. So if there is any questions on these, okay. If not, I would like to see if possibly we can get these paid, all of them, to a total of 5,377.50 for the three attorneys.
I'll make a motion to pay the bill. Bills from Mindy's Zoglin?
So the um, Osborne Reed has not been approved yet by the uh, board chair.
I talked to Bill the other day, and he said he had signed off on them.
He'd signed off on a bunch of, of them. I'm not sure that one. But can you guys pause for a minute? Let me double check on that one. Uh, this is, yeah, he, 57699. Bill, um, Bill approved 56746. He did not approve 57699. Yeah, so 5769. Mary, do you show that that one was approved? Because that's not one that I show approved.
I don't have any comment on any one of these as being approved or not approved. I, we just, I'm looking to see if you have had any kind of conversation with anybody, and if we can just go forward and pay them.
Right. So we, we, we can, we have approved the Zoglin Group one. We're ready to approve that one, based on the adjustment. Thank you, Bob. Um, and the Hodgson Russ, um, I've reviewed it. If, if the other trustees would like to review it as well. This was, you know, this is our work, so it doesn't need to go to a different board chair.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion, then?
I'll make a motion to pay the Zoglin Group as amended, and to pay the Hodgson Russ bill, um, 1084871.
I'll second the motion. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please? And did you have a comment, Steve? I saw your hand.
Yeah, I, I wanted to find out if we, we were paying those ones about the research about the building permits, or if we find out, found out who actually asked for that research and why.
I, I did. I, I, I explained it at the last meeting. Um, I don't have my notes with me right now, Steve, but I did, I talked to Mindy myself. She explained why, and I, I don't have my notes with me. I don't recall at the moment what it was.
Bob, it had something to do with 75 Monroe. It had nothing to do with the building inspector per se.
That, that is correct. That is correct. There, there was a legitimate reason for it. It had nothing to do with you.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
No, it actually did have something to do with Steve, uh, trustee Galusha. Uh, they, they were doing research about building permits related to 75 Monroe Avenue. That is true, Mary, but they shouldn't have gone ahead with that research until they checked with our building inspector, who knows quite a bit about permits, and they just went ahead and did the research, and they really shouldn't have without an authorization. So that actually did involve Steve. But I, I think that the adjustment was, was related to that.
They made a significant adjustment on the bill, because I talked to her, and she agreed that some of it was, was not a legitimate um, charge. So they did reduce the bill significantly.
Okay, okay.
I just don't have my notes with me, because I wasn't expecting to talk about it tonight.
Yeah, no, that's what I thought.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, trustee? Hold on.
I was gonna say, Osborne Bill is the only one that is left to be uh, addressed for the January meeting, then. Go ahead.
That, that is correct.
Okay, trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lampier. I, I see her. She's saying aye, but it's not coming through.
Lily, we can't hear you. Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Hey, Lily, um, I would suggest you reboot at this point. Um, you're having all kinds of trouble. Um, try a reboot and sign back in, and, and you may have some success.
Okay.
She seems fine if she just turns the camera off.
Yeah, I think she should just keep the camera off. In any case, okay, let's move on.
Okay, moving on. I had uh, closed out the general fund today. Uh, so the numbers that I have in the packet are actually raw numbers. I haven't gone through and made any adjustments. I will need to do some budget transfers. I will bring this up back up to the board on the January meeting, but I wanted to give you an idea of where we stood with things. And um, so I'll just go through briefly. Our Monroe County sales tax, we need to still collect 186.5 to meet our budget needs, which would mean a check for at least 93,000 in February, and then again in um, May, which I'm hoping we will come to do it. It would be lower than what we have had collected in the, in the past, but I'm hoping it at least comes in within budget. Um, on the sales of equipment, 2665, and if Zach is still on, he could correct me on this. We ordered the T450, and we were going to use uh, salvage money towards that end, where we would take the, whatever we were trading um, to auction. But instead of doing that, he is trading in against the T450. So this 16.5 may not come to fruition at all in this budget year. That's just an FYI. Um, on the next page, New York State AIM and mortgage tax should come in sometime over the next couple of weeks. Our CHIPS payment um, has been approved. We are waiting a check that should come out just before Christmas. So that's all good. Um, moving forward to the expenses, uh, we are currently for uh, 1410.41 insurance. We are 16, with tonight's payment, we are 16,000 underspent in this category, but that's not the final number. So it just may be that we may end up coming in um, lower at year end, but I'm, I'm keeping that kind of on my radar. Um, let's see. On the engineer, I did get Scott Harder's bill for 2,700, which was approved in tonight's um, in tonight's abstract. And that money, I will submit four CHIPS uh, so that we can recover all those funds. On 1620.4 Village Hall improvements, we have $6,000 that we had budgeted, 1,000 that we've used. We are having some furnace issues with the furnace that is controlling the boardroom and the upstairs, and George will be coming in next week. So whatever, he comes out for repairs or suggestions may end up coming out, out of that category in the next uh, next month or so. Contingents...
Can I just comment really quick? Last time I talked to George on the furnaces, as we were looking to replace them, the solution he suggested could be between 10 and 15,000 to streamline the system to eliminate one of the furnaces and move it to gas. So as he comes in and seeing how bad it is, we'll make a determination, but either way, it will end up being a budget item for next year.
Correct.
And I think, I think probably um, it makes sense to move it to gas. We've talked about it for a long time, and I think, you know, this may be the um, straw that breaks the camel's back.
I think it's quite old, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that furnace. I think it was uh, put in, I think.
It's about, yeah, it's, it's, it's around 20 years old. So it's, it's time.
Yep. Uh, contingency account, we have $26,000 that um, I will, I am kind of holding onto until the very end, probably around April, March, April, before I actually move the money out of here, if I can avoid it, uh, because we will need money in other categories. 5110.2 is the equipment for the T450, which has been ordered, and I think the net cost there is going to be about $35,000 with, with attachments. And let me see what else. I think that's it on this page. Drainage on uh, on the next page, 8540.4. We're sitting in a negative, and we will have more negative put into that because of the Monroe Avenue, the 8500 for Monroe Avenue, and then from Villager. I think it was around $11,000 that will be hitting this category. So I will have to make a transfer, but I'm going to try to hold off as long as possible on this transfer until I see uh, how this all sips out. Under the employee benefits, state retirement, workers' compensation are both sitting with negatives in the category. I need to allocate some of the money to sewer, and that may clear that part of it up. Um, talked about the drainage. On the 9060.8, which is health and dental insurance, I still need to move the employee portion over, so that will clear up some of that. And that is it. The difference between revenues and expenses at the end of November was 52310281, which is good so far. Um, fund balance at the end of November 30th is 70423901. Still on target for an ending balance of 1850777. It would be good if we end up with that figure or higher. So that said, that's it there. I don't need approval, because I still am working on it. Like I said, I just finished it this afternoon. Uh, the next item I have on the list, which you do not have, is January is typically our start of our budget season. And um, I will, probably will need a time from everybody. I'm looking at possibly Thursday, January 7th, to start off, you know, a short meeting, just to start off and discuss our wishlist items. And if at all possible, if you can get me those wishlist items between now and then, it would be hugely helpful so that I can start to get organized. With my time being limited in the office, I'm, you know, the pressure is on. So uh, just throwing out a date out there, if you could check your calendars and see what works for you, that would be awesome.
Yeah, so Tuesdays and Thursdays are when I teach, so those are not ideal days. If we could make it a Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, that, that fits my schedule better.
What works for everybody else?
Wednesday would be, when, Wednesday would work fine for me.
Okay.
I'm okay for a Wednesday.
To start, sometimes we are, we're able to start those a little early, so it's not uh, a super late meeting.
Yeah, I would, honestly, I would prefer to start it early, you know, myself. So whatever time is...
What time, what time are people available if we start a little early? What, what, what's the availability of the board?
We're saying Wednesday, the 6th. Is that what we're looking at?
We're looking at Wednesday, 6th at this point, yes.
6th of January?
Yes, January 6th.
Okay. I'm available there.
I'll go earlier than 4:00 for me. But I could go a little early.
Would 4:00 work, Dan, or would you prefer 4:30?
Uh, 4:00 is fine. Thank you.
Matt, I can make that work. Are we booking that on our calendars?
4:00?
As, as long as everybody's good.
Wednesday, January 6th. Great. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, I'll send out an email tomorrow to confirm that, and if there's any issues, please let me know. Other than that, um, if you can just get me what you are thinking that I need to incorporate into the budget that um, we need to look at for next year, that would be helpful. The sooner the better, so I can start gathering those figures together. All right, that's it for me.
Okay. Um, uh, next item, Renee and I, Renee, do you want to give the report on our discussion? Yes. Dorothea, did you have something?
Yes, I had the HS healthcare funding for the next year.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I forgot about that.
Sorry. Um, in the packet is the health savings account funding. I have included every employee who possibly will be funding. There is one employee who might be taking funding this year, and it, right now, I'm booking at a family plan. It very well might step down to a single plan. They have until Friday for enrollment, so I'd rather make sure they're covered, that we have the funding for them if they decide to go ahead. So if I can just have approval on this list.
So move. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Trustee Galusha.
Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Sure. Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lampier. Okay. Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes. Okay, I'm done.
Okay. Um, uh, back to where we were. Renee, do you want to give a summary of our discussion yesterday with Marge? Or do you want me to do it? Either way?
Sure, I can. Um, and do you already have notes prepared? I'll be winging it, but that's okay. I don't have...
Okay, no, I can, I can. Um, last week, Marge Burns contacted me because she was eager to assist us um, to move forward our 25 mile per hour speed limit. Uh, Renee and I met with her yesterday, and uh, her office is going to provide a, a timeline to re, um, the bills that we have introduced before are gone, so we have to start the process all over again. Uh, her office is supposed to send us a timeline of when we have to do what, and if you remember from before, we will once again have to pass a local uh, home rule law after the bill has been introduced. Um, so she'll get us that information. Uh, as I have mentioned before, I've talked to Bill Smith and Mike Piero and Howard Mafucci about supporting not only the 25 mile per hour speed limit, but also the transition zones on the perimeter of, of the village. Once we have the bill drawn up again, uh, we're going to set up an appointment for everybody to meet with them. It was also suggested by Marge that we reach out to people, to the, to our other representatives... It was also suggested by Marge that we reach out to people, to the to our other representatives, including Samra Brook, I believe it is, who's our newly represented state senator, as well as Joe, Samra, I think, that's that's correct, Samra. As well as Joe Morelli, our congressional representative. And Renee has agreed to reach out to the two of them and will report to you as we have more more progress. Did I forget anything, Renee?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, I don't have anything new on the State Street Bridge. We haven't heard anything more from DOT. We did get a letter back from Kevin Bush, which was a little disappointing. I sent it out earlier today in an email that I also sent to the State Street residents with an update of of what we've all been doing. And with that, I'm going to move to my own member items. Two things I wanted to mention, we've already talked about the speed century, so we'll cross that one off. I did have a discussion with the owner of Chandelier's Boutique. There's been some, they've had some problems because due to COVID, they had a lot of deliveries that they make. They need a place for their employees to park, where their employees can also do deliveries. And in the discussion, we brainstormed, and I suggested that we change the parking requirements on Monroe Avenue, which are currently limited to thirty minutes to unrestricted, so they could use that parking space, which currently doesn't go used. This would fulfill a recommendation that's included in the Act of Transportation Plan. Jeff has looked at the section of the code where we can change that requirement, which Jeff is.
It is one ninety five hyphen thirty three.
So I would propose that we hold a public hearing to amend eliminating the thirty minute maximum parking requirement for the parking spaces located on Monroe Avenue adjacent to the Chandelier's Boutique.
I have a quick question before we move forward. That's a state road, what do we have to do? Do we have to do any coordinating with DOT?
I don't believe so, Jeff, do you know?
Right, right now in our code, we have that thirty minute parking. So we have, we have cleared that for parking spaces. I don't think it matters whether they're thirty minutes or no limit.
All in the past, Renee, we have changed the parking requirements on the main streets. DOT doesn't care what the 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 time limits are, they care where the parking is, and this wouldn't change that.
So since we have that parking, they won't care that it's round the clock instead of thirty minute or whatever we do with it. They don't, they just, they're not concerned about the time limit, you're saying, okay.
I I don't think so, I don't think so.
It's it's actually not round the clock, there's a prohibition to park there from four to six thirty.
If this evening rush hour parking is prohibited there, and we probably wouldn't change that without talking to DOT.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So it's not.
Right. Okay, so that is my motion, do I have a second for that motion?
Question, Bob. This is in the ATP?
I believe so, yes.
Well, adding, considering more on-street parking in in on Monroe Avenue is one of the things that we were considering.
So would it be fair to characterize this as a a device to control traffic?
I don't think so, because it's not there.
No, I I I don't think so, because the parking spaces exist already. We're just, this will allow better utilization of existing parking spaces to meet the needs of the business community.
Well, I meant the parking spaces being there. Whether, no matter what they're, the timeframe, or the parking spaces being there, could that be considered a trap, a device to control traffic? This is, this goes to Seeker.
I don't think it would, I don't, we're not, we're not adding parking spaces, it's not controlling traffic. It's really only changing the time limit on spaces that already exist. So I don't think it would trigger Seeker, because we're not changing, we're not adding parking, we're just changing the requirements, right?
It, but it's an action that is unlisted unless it's, unless those spaces, part of those spaces are designed to control traffic. This would be an unlisted action. It would be occurring in a historic district, so that bumps it up to type one. So that's why I was asking whether or not the the spaces are at all related with, no matter the length of time related to them, whether they're related to traffic control.
Traffic control is different, I mean, traffic control is not one of the things we discussed necessarily in the Act of Transportation Plan. Do you mean traffic calming, or you mean traffic control?
I mean, if you're calming traffic, you're controlling it.
Right, but this, but traffic control could be.
I don't, I don't think we could really consider these as.
Not traffic calming.
I don't think we can consider it traffic control, no, I don't think we could.
So I think this is going to be a type one action.
Stretch it to consider that, I don't believe that would be right.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a type one action for Seeker then, so.
Okay, so.
Send out the thirty day notices. And indicating our intent to be lead agencies, that I'm just telling Dorothea that because of scheduling purposes.
It meets the threshold for a type one action?
It's unlisted, it's an unlisted action, and it's occurring within an historic district.
Okay.
Okay, this is trustee Lamphier. Hi, this is trustee Lamphier.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I I am going to second Bob's motion, and I do believe we have to move it to, we will have to do Seeker, because it is an unlisted action. So let's take care of that first.
Well, we can actually take care of that in the interim. Just authorized Dorothea to set out the notices that we're going to be lead, that are of our intention to be lead agencies. She also has to send it to county planning. For state roads.
Which I have to ask a question, are we meeting our aging requirement on this situation?
No. Because we don't have a, we don't have a proposed law for them to look at.
So I can't, I have nothing to send them?
Well, Jeff will draw up a proposed law, so we'll we'll have to, we'll have to wait on setting the public hearing, but.
Yep, I can do that.
Right. Okay, the other thing I have to report on is I did meet with Margaux Fass and Patty Love, who's a permaculture expert, to walk around the Village GPW property to talk about some of the steps that will be required to accelerate the transition from the existing secondary growth to a mature northeastern United States hardwoods woodlot, including the possibility of starting a nursery on site, eliminating invasive species, and selecting areas that would be suitable for cultivating as metal versus a hardwood woodlot. So she is going to draw up a suggested planting list of plants that will be seed plantings to start that transition, and there will be no cost to the village for that. It's it's being done as part of the mission of the Frog House Group, which is very interested in both the Erie Canal Park and Preserve and the Village Arboretum as community development projects. Do other trustees have member items that they would like to discuss or present?
This is trustee Lamphier. I have just one, and that is I am in contact with a member of the Garden Club, and they are interested in also being involved in the arboretum, and I will be working out how they would like to be involved. And I can, once I meet with them, I will have a more of a of a plan to present to the trustees regarding that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other member items?
I do, Mayor Corby.
Go ahead, Renee.
I met with Captain Delizer from the Monroe County Sheriff's Department, just to get an update on traffic enforcement, speed mitigation. And he wanted to to let us know that the speed trailers have to shut down for winter, because they're not made for for snow. I guess they get damaged pretty easily. So they will deploy those again in the spring and rotate them around in the, you know, the shared, the, between the whole shared zone A. But so you won't see those out on the the road during the winter. Every day, they put a decoy car somewhere out in the village. They park it and just, and kind of moving it around at all of the the special attention routes that we've given them. They're not handing out as many tickets, they're they're getting a lot of pushback from the public and from the people they pull over. They get yelled at quite frequently for pulling people over right now by the people, by the by the drivers who are violating the the law, but they're getting a lot of grief because of the increase in in cases and the fear around COVID, and everybody's just at a at a breaking point right now. So they're handing out less, less tickets than usual, but they're still out. Captain Delizer and Deputy Thurston have been out particularly on State Street. And they've, Dan, I can't remember if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, resident on line, near Line Street. Yeah, so they have a special attention set up on French Road near East Avenue, because that's another trouble spot. And Sunset and South Main, which is outside of the village, but West Jefferson Road and between Sunset and Sutherland and Silk State Street. And we just added again Maple and South, because we, for both speeding and for some violations of the stop, the stop sign, rolling through that stop sign. So does anyone have any other questions or things that I need to to pass along to to him about traffic enforcement?
I I don't for Captain Delizer, but I do for Zach. I had a call from a resident on East Jefferson Road who was concerned about, obviously, the speed of incoming traffic there. I wondered if they could get the speeds signed there again, and they were concerned that some of the thirty mile per hour signs weren't visible enough. So maybe Zach, you and I can at one day drive over there and take a look at that. Anybody else, Dan or Frank, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a few. So one of them was an agenda item that got skipped about, and we covered most of it, which was the the follow up to the speeding summit. The only outstanding item we haven't yet talked about, because thank you, Renee, on mentioning those where the police are in the speed centuries, those were a couple. But on Maple Street, Zach, they had requested more twenty mile per hour signs on eleven ten. That was one of the action items that came out of it. Has any movement happened there, or does does that still need to stay open?
On that section of south between Maple and State Street, there really is not a good placement for that. You have to have so much distance between the stop ahead sign and the stop sign, and you can't really put a twenty mile an hour speed limit sign in between those two and a twenty mile an hour speed limit sign before that, leading up to the stop ahead sign. There is no real good place to put that between the sidewalk and the curved street. So it's kind of a difficult situation, and I'm just kind of at a loss on where to put them.
So we ruined it by putting in stop signs?
The twenty mile an hour speed limit sign was mounted where the stop ahead sign currently is.
So the stop ahead sign, don't, they don't have to stay forever, right? Those are just to, when they're new, or do we leave those up?
Depends on how much warning we want to give motorists, you know, that there's a stop ahead. If they're already rolling through.
Okay, there's no other place that we can put the stop ahead, like giving them super warning? Real estate for these things, I know you've been struggling.
Yeah, again, I mean, it's it's the same type of situation, I can move it closer towards the stop sign. But they're both pretty well in view of each other once you get up on that stop sign. So it kind of defeat the purpose of having, it's like having.
We have to get rid of the stop ahead sign in order to get an an extra twenty mile an hour sign, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. I wonder if we can get, you know, those stop signs that they have on Rand, is it Rand? No, it's Wright's, it got like a.
They're expensive. The flashing light. Yeah, they're, everything.
It's around the stops.
It's got to be solar powered. And those signs, the last time I priced them out, I think were around sixteen hundred dollars a piece just for the sign. And that's out without the post and the building and everything else. It's always an option, we can put that out there, but the other problem with solar is too, is is they don't always work too well in a partially shaded area. You need direct sunlight. Which is also expensive. The other option would be is to continue on with redesigning or the traffic study that we were doing on South Street, for when we actually do go through and repave, rebuild South Street and include S R up in that and see if they have any good ideas.
Yeah, well, they've already got some, you know, speed cushions and things like that built in in there with the the space for the the rear or the wheel wells for the emergency vehicles, so we just, we have to get by until that traffic calming can happen.
Yeah. Again, I I just, between between Maple and Jefferson, not so much of a problem, because there's sidewalk, there's there's enough room between the sidewalk and the road to put any kind of signage that we want.
Yeah.
There's that one section on both sides of the road that it's really difficult to put any signage.
I would be curious if we can get that speed century out there. I'm wondering if we actually can get some some data on that section to see if if it's a perceived, I mean, it would be good to have the data. Is it a perception that people are speeding, or are they actually speeding now that the signs are in? I don't think we've done a, an analysis of the data or collected any data post signs going in, or I meant stop signs.
Anecdotally, Renee, it's still quite fast, it's it might be a little better, but I've walked there every day with my dog.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I doubt too many people are actually doing twenty miles an hour through there, honestly.
Oh, they are not.
Yeah, just from being out there, I could tell. If they're doing thirty, they're, you know, going slow.
Okay, so I have a, I have one other member item, which is the statement that I read at each meeting. I'm still in favor of negotiating with Mark Four. The last we spoke of this was in the winter of two thousand nineteen, when the idea was to have Bob, me, Susan Loda, and Bill McBride sit down with Mark Four. The idea stalled, for what reason I don't know. I would still like to make this happen, otherwise we're waiting for the legal system to solve seventy five Monroe, which we've seen no sign of and is incredibly expensive year after year. Again, as you recall, the negotiations between these parties would be nonbinding, as the subboards are the ones with approval.
And I would just add to that, that there is a settlement process underway. The attorneys for all three boards have met. The correspondence has been shared with the court. We gave a report on that at our last meeting, and we are making a good faith effort to pursue the settlement that has been proposed by the court. Okay, any other member items before we adjourn? If there are not, I would make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Lamphier, second.
Thank you, I think Renee was first, Lily, thank you.
That's fine.
No, I know.
I can't see anything.
Thank you, everybody, and and Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Sure, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Gotcha. Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes, and we'll look forward to seeing everybody in the new year.
Thank you, everybody, have a good evening.
Thank you.